Thank you. And I'll call to order the Committee of the Whole, Parks, and Environmental Sustainability. I'm the Presiding Officer, David Carson. In attendance are Councilmembers Anderson, Forsyth, Kritzer, and Stewart. Councilmembers Fields and Khan will be absent. We have two items on our agenda, and the first is the November Environmental Sustainability Action Plan update and leaf blower overview. And we have this scheduled for 15 minutes, so let's see if we can beat that.
Let's do it. Perfect. Yeah, good afternoon, Council. So I am Jenny Liebeck. I'm the Sustainability Manager. So again, this is our monthly ESAP update, and that's included as Attachment A in the meeting materials. But really, the goal for today is to dive in on leaf blowers. And so with me today, I have Tristan Osborne from Public Works, as well as Dave Tuchek from Parks, to share more about their work integrating electric leaf blowers into city maintenance practices. And then, kind of just to, I think, ground us a little bit, you know, we understand that electric leaf blowers are a priority, or kind of this effort is a priority in an area of interest for council. And so, you know, we have done a community survey to understand the community's interests in this topic, and we're working through kind of a co-learning process to kind of identify and understand next steps. So really, the goal for today is to share what the city's been doing, right? That the city and staff have been actively engaged and involved in testing and integrating electric equipment as they can, and they'll talk about that. And so, we really just want to highlight and show that that work articulates some of the challenges that our staff are facing as they're integrating the electric equipment into city operations, and really discuss how we're continuing to kind of move this effort forward, at least again on the city side. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dave and Tristan to kind of talk through some of the work that they're doing on the operations front.
Great. Thanks, Jenny. Dave Tuchek here, Deputy Director. Hello, council members. Tristan and I are here today to share and discuss information regarding electric leaf blowers and our use of them. So three major points that we're going to cover: what the city is currently doing with this technology, and then challenges and concerns, and then next steps that we're going to be taking. So what the city is currently doing, so we currently own multiple pieces of equipment that both departments utilize. So we have handheld blowers, line trimmers, chainsaws, hedgers, all-electric equipment. We also have utility vehicles, lifts, aerial lifts, things like that. So we are utilizing the equipment right now. We also actively demo different types of equipment. So as new equipment comes onboard, the stuff that we've purchased, but then also, we are actively looking to see what's available in the market. And then, a really good example of that is, we had 12 staff members, I think it was, what, a week and a half ago, or, yeah, could have even been last week. Over at the City of Kirkland, they had the electric leaf blower demo and roundtable discussion. So it was really focused on leaf blowers. We had 12 staff members, like I said, who attended it. They were able to actually utilize the latest and greatest equipment. And then, we also, there were some elected officials there, too. And I believe there were four or five different jurisdictions that were represented there. So it was really good. And we learned quite a bit, had some great discussions. And then, we're also alternative equipment that we're using right now. So things that emit less carbon, and I know that Public Works is utilizing a vent, they call it a ventrak, which is a riding piece of equipment with a large blower on it, which emits less carbon per, I guess it would be cubic feet per minute. You can blow a lot more with that piece of equipment without polluting as much. We also have some walk-behind mowers that we utilize that are gas-powered. So anyway, so that's what we're doing right now. And then, challenges and concerns, and this is pretty much universal across the different agencies that we were hearing. So the number one thing is the weight of the backpack blowers, the electric blowers. So they weigh approximately 14 pounds more than the gas-powered blowers. So the existing gas backpack blowers, the gas-powered ones, the highest-powered machines, and we own them, they're 24 pounds. And you add another 14 pounds on top of that for the electric blower, you're at 38 pounds. So it's really like 40 pounds on your back. When you do it all day for multiple weeks, it's a lot, and it becomes a safety issue for our operators. So that's probably our number-one concern. The next tier down would be efficiency. So the electric technology right now, it's less efficient, meaning that it blows less air to move the debris. Yeah. So then, it's just not as effective. And then, also, the airspeed is reduced. So really, it's just a matter of not being able to move as much debris, particularly this time of year, when the leaves and debris is, it's really wet, it's sticky, it doesn't want to move, you need power. So that's probably the second tier of concern. The other thing that we're finding out is the battery runtime. So you can get about an hour and a half to two hours on one of these batteries, and they're pretty big. They weigh about 16 pounds. So you would need approximately four to five of these batteries per backpack blower. And so, you know, if you multiply that by how many blowers that we're utilizing in a day, particularly this time of year, it's a lot of batteries. That's not as big of a concern as the weight or the efficiency, but it is a concern. And then, just lastly, the cost. So the cost for an electric blower and a gas blower, they're fairly equivalent, but then when you add the battery to the electric blower, it adds another approximately $1,500. So gas blower and electric blower is about $700, but then you have to add an additional $1,500 for the battery. And then, if you have five of those, four or five of those per blower, you know, it gets expensive. That's probably the fourth tier of our concern. And then, next steps, we're going to continue to demonstrate, you know, equipment. So we're going to continue our research. We're convinced that technology is just going to keep getting better and better. The machines are going to continue to get more powerful, they're going to continue to get lighter, and eventually, we're going to reach that point where, you know, they're very equivalent to the gas-powered machines right now. We're going to continue to purchase electric maintenance equipment. The staff actually prefers a lot of the gas chainsaws, the glass hedgers, the weed eaters, that type of a thing, so we're going to continue to expand that. And then, also continue with leaf blowers, electric leaf blowers where it's applicable. It works really good, like at downtown park. You don't have a lot of area to blow down there, there's some hard surface, but it's a pretty small square footage, and it's great. The maintenance is easier, it's easy to grab, it's already charged, and then you zip around and blow the debris. The challenge is when we have miles and miles and miles of sidewalk, hard surface or turf areas that we're trying to blow. And then, lastly, as you know, we're working on our Climate Resiliency and Sustainability and Vegetation Management Project, which is a big, big name for basically making our vegetation management practices more sustainable, and our vegetative areas more sustainable. So part of that would be ties right into the leaf blower discussion, things like leaving more leaf debris on-site. So rather than blowing all of the leaves into big piles and hauling them out of the park, we'll actually, we're starting to blow more of the leaves into the shrub beds or around the tree circles and leaving them on-site, which means you have less hours of operating this equipment, this leaf blower equipment. One of the alternatives that we're looking at also would be to use electric blowers for nine months out of the year. So, you know, possibly the spring, summer, and early fall, when during the dry season, you're not handling the big chunks of debris. But then, you know, during the two months during the fall, utilize the more powerful gas equipment right now until the electric technology, you know, meets. So in summary, basically, the technology's getting better, the equipment is getting more powerful and lighter, and then, as the technology advances, the equipment will become more and more practical for commercial-grade use. And that's really all the information. I don't know, Tristan, if you want to add anything else?
No, I mean, a lot of what Dave covered is the same for Public Works. I think in Public Works, we've been proactive at trying to identify areas and different equipment that we can use in lieu of the backpack blowers, like Dave mentioned, the ventrak with a blower on it, that we can try and blow the debris back in green areas and green spaces. You know, it's just, there's always going to be a need for that tool in the toolbox, unfortunately, right now with the technology. But, you know, we're going to keep, you know, being proactive and looking for, you know, it may not be one-for-one, a backpack blower for a backpack blower, but, you know, council approved the leaf vacuum that's, you know, on order and expect to derive Q1. So that will be, you know, a tool that we don't have to blow off, we can just remove, you know, Tier IV diesel engine, you know, highly efficient. So those are the kind of methods and equipment we're looking at, you know, in addition to what Dave covered.
Yep. One thing, oh, you're good.
Yeah, I was just going to say, kind of reiterate, our number-one concern really is the safety of the operators at this time with the extra weight, but then also, you know, we need that extra power out there to move the leaf debris, particularly off of the hard-surface areas, because, like I said, as that leaf debris gets wet and then it starts to break down, it creates that slick film. And, you know, if you have that all over the sidewalks in the hard-surface areas in the city, that can be a problem. And then, also, we do a lot of leaf removal, I know Public Works does, around the storm drainage system. You know, we have the street sweeper, but then there's also a lot of handwork, too. So I just wanted to really reemphasize that point.
Yeah, and then, just as a near-term next step, too, we would like to invite council to, there's an electric leaf blower roundtable that the City of Kirkland is hosting, so this is a follow-on to that event that Dave just mentioned, that a lot of our staff went to. So it's a really great opportunity for it to actually, like, put on the leaf blower, the backpacks, and test them out, and see what our staff are experiencing, especially as we look at that 15-pound, you know, weight difference. And then, also, they're bringing together legislators and other elected officials in the region to basically be able to talk about some of this work. So I think it's just, we really benefited from that staff-level conversation. It was really, really fruitful, and I appreciate that Kirkland is serving as this convener in this space that's really needed. And again, I think it's a great opportunity, so I'll send those details out to the council members tomorrow, so if that's of interest, you can register.
Great, thank you. So just one clarification I had for you, Dave, was, so you talked about the price of the blower, the electric blower versus, so you're saying the unit is about the same, but then, you still have to buy the battery for, or does it come with one at that price?
No, you need to buy an additional battery.
And so, it's twice the cost of the unit?
Yeah, basically.
Okay. Wow, okay. I just wanted to, so, and that's not with duplicates, that's just one?
Correct.
Okay, so then, we're talking, like, yeah, it's many, many times the actual units' cost to get them, to get five or six batteries for that unit, to have them ready to go for a day.
Yeah, so that, you know, that's where the technology is right now. But that's at the, you know, that's the most powerful machine that's out there that still makes for electric power for commercial use. So, you know, a homeowner?
Right, a different, different unit altogether, yeah.
It's a different unit, yeah, altogether.
Yeah, I've looked at some of those prices, and, I mean, obviously, this is an industrial unit, so, okay. I just wanted that clarification, and I know we're going to have questions, so I'll go with Councilmember Forsyth.
Thank you. First, I will say thank you for mentioning the leaf sweeper. I wrote the blurb in our quarterly newsletter about that, and I was very excited, and then that went out, and the leaf sweeper's not here. So just for those in the community that read that blurb about how excited we were about it, it's not quite here yet. But it will still be amazing, once it gets here. And just wanted to say thanks for attending the Kirkland Roundtable. I know that, you know, I've been a big proponent of us following in their footsteps, and at least the tiered approach that they have to landscapers and how they're working to do grants for people to purchase leaf blowers. I think that's a great idea, and, yeah, keep us posted on when that roundtable is. I thought I saw an email about December 18th. Is that the, that's the date? Okay. So we, I think we did get that, but sending it out again would be great as well, so, thanks.
Councilmember Kritzer, and then Stewart.
Well, first, I will just follow up on the previous conversation to just speak to, for those who are listening, I actually have an electric leaf blower at home, and it's great, and it was not super expensive. So I do think we are talking about the more industrial scale or the bigger things that we need for this heavy-duty usage, and I just wanted to say that for all the listeners out there, if you're thinking of, it works for us in our scale of yard and in kind of average home, so. Anyway, I do really appreciate all the work that you've done on this, thinking through it, and being able to share with us, you know, some of these concerns, and I had the same thought before you got to it, just around as we are transitioning, thinking about, you know, if we do still need a certain amount of intensity or power from these kind of bigger leaf blowers during certain times of year, but other times of year, we don't necessarily need that, we can use the electric leaf blowers. I love that idea of being able to say, nine months of the year, how much are we using this, especially if we do look at the emissions? And maybe it means that we don't necessarily have to purchase some of those heavy-duty electric ones, if we're going to keep around some of the emitting ones for a little bit longer. So, and I appreciate the need to kind of wait and watch a little bit to see, because I think with a lot of electric technology, it's evolving quite quickly, and especially around battery technology, I think that's an area where we'll likely see some change over time, where it's expensive in a lot of places. So one question that I had in terms of the Kirkland Roundtable that you all went to was just, can you share a little bit more with us about what you learned from them in terms of their implementation, both from residential as well as in their city? Were they reflecting the same challenges that you're seeing? Were they, did they have kind of other ways that they went about it, or was it mostly just spending more in order to address the issue?
Yeah, so then, Jenny, I don't know, I had 12 staff go, so I had three supervisors, seven frontline staff, and then we had an hour and a half debrief. They, basically, everybody was saying the same thing in terms of what I had just shared. They're all experiencing the same thing. Kirkland has been kind of on the forefront of, they're probably, they've been like maybe 10 to 12 months ahead of us in terms of doing the demos and that kind of stuff. So they've been actively demoing this equipment for about a year or so. And they, you know, it's the exact same thing that I just mentioned, so the weight and then the efficiencies, and, yeah.
And one thing I'll just add, too, was this need to make sure, that Kirkland was really trying to highlight, was making sure manufacturers hear from cities as basically commercial users, right? To your point, yes, the residential, small leaf blowers, their cost parity is pretty good and that kind of thing, but we want, and Kirkland is really trying to educate the manufacturers as well of the needs of cities in particular, and so that they will also be invited to that roundtable, which is great. And then, there was one other piece that I wanted to highlight with that. Oh, I think, and it was also ensuring, too, that we can help educate state officials on this as well, of the nuance of these policies, right? There is a proposed piece of legislation about, I think it's electric lawn care equipment is how it's phrased, but making sure that, again, they understand the full suite of things, that all of the points Dave made of, you know, that's not quite there yet technology-wise for commercial applications and that kind of thing, so that they have that full breadth of understanding. So that was one of the big takeaways as well, is just, I think there's good awareness at the local government level of what's needed, and helping make sure that other stakeholders, including, again, manufacturers and state officials, understand that as well, so.
Great, thank you very much. And just appreciate all of the work and research into this, since it is something when we asked our residents that they're interested in, but also to be able to, as I think we talked about, walk the walk as a city in terms of our municipal operations, so that we can get a sense of what the impact would be in, you know, as we ask other community members, especially people who run small businesses using these. So, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Stewart.
Great, thank you. A lot has been covered, so I will just quickly say, yes, council did get the invite for the 18th. I RSVP'd that I'm unable to get away from work on that particular day, but I sent a thank-you note, because it was so lovely to get invited to be in conversation with our neighbors on that. So I, if someone from our council is able to attend, certainly I would hope that they would come and report back about what they learned. I think the most important thing that we've, that I'm going to take away personally from this conversation tonight, is a few more tools for us in conversation with community, because this is an issue we continue to hear about so much from community. So the safety issue, that's a new one for me to understand. 14 additional pounds, I've done enough backpacking in my life to know, 14, like, I could never cut 14 pounds on my pack, because I would, anyway, 38 pounds is a lot. So the safety issue, that's hugely important. Also, that we are working with our neighboring jurisdictions to educate manufacturers and advocate for the investment in these tools more quickly, so that we can act on our community values. I think that gives us tools as council members to better demonstrate what the city is doing and can do right now, while is sharing in the enthusiasm of our community members and wanting to go faster. So thank you so much for helping us be better team players for all of you. Thanks.
Great. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you for this presentation. I think one of the most helpful points that you made was the day, the daily use time for the battery. What is the expected lifetime of the batteries?
That's a good question. I'm not sure. I can follow up on that for you, for sure.
That would be great. My follow-up question to the follow-up that I might be getting will be, if there's a battery take-back program, just from like the long-term potential for this particular kind of equipment, depending on how we scale it, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. So I had a couple of thoughts that, on the safety issue, I think, I think the one that we've not really talked about, and, or much, is the noise factor. I do expect that they're going to be less noisy, but is that, is that accurate? Do we, do we know?
Yeah, I can answer that. So they've measured decibels on both. Actually, the decibel readings are very similar, but it's the frequency that's different.
Okay.
So they're, anyway, the data's showing that the gas-powered equipment is a lower frequency, so the sound waves have a tendency, they can, you know, go through walls easier and things like that, as high as, high-pitched?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and then, the second was, so with blowers, no matter what the power source, they're putting lots of dirt particles into the air. And so, are we looking at other technologies like the sweeper versus, you know, and they don't, they don't work between shrub, I mean, it's, you know, they don't work in small spaces. I get that there's a tactical approach to, you know, getting leaves out of beds and things like that, so, but that is one of the other complaints that we have, is that, well, usually that the engines are putting out a lot of exhaust, which I can attest, because my landscapers, I had my kitchen window open when they were blowing my backyard, and it was horrible. So, and so, one question on that line is, we don't, we don't use any two-cycle kind of engines, they're all four-stroke engines that we use now, or are they the older style?
Yeah, so they're, they're two-cycle.
Two-cycle, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so they, that's, yeah.
So it's, it's gas mixed with oil, so that's, that's the smell that, you know, everybody knows when, when, you know, I mean, like I said, when I had the window open, I was just like, oh, man, that's really bad. So, okay, so, and are there, are there four-cycle engines in the blower market? Because it seems like there should be, if there aren't.
Yeah, so.
Anybody know? I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just curious, because they don't put out the particles of oil, which is what you're smelling when, when you have, you know, the gas exhaust from blowers currently. So I'm, I don't know, maybe, and they're usually more expensive, just like when, so they actually banned two-cycle motorcycle engines.
Right.
Back, I don't know, in the 90s, I think it was, and, like, you know, because, I know, when I was in, when I was in Germany after college, they, they had cars that were running on two-cycle engines, and the pollution was unbelievable. So the Trebants that would run around East Germany were all two-cycle engines, and so that would be a huge step, just getting to something like that, but, and still maybe having the power and flexibility that two-cycle engines, I don't know, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so, we'll definitely take a look at it. I know the, you know, basically, the major manufacturers that we use, and we use still equipment. I'm not aware of any that they have, but there might be something out there, for sure.
Okay, great, thanks. I'm trying to think if there was anything, anything else on this topic? Anything on the, on the monthly that you wanted to highlight?
The thing on the monthly to highlight, we'll dive in on some, like, data and that kind of thing on the next item, so.
Okay, great. All right, we'll move on to item number two, then. Oh, yeah, sorry, Councilmember Stewart.
I have one question, well, actually, a comment about the monthly update. Thank you so much, Ms. Liebeck. It reminded me that we have this lovely Environmental Sustainability Action Committee, who has been providing a lot of good work all year long. I just wanted to put a plug in for some opportunity in the new year for us to express some gratitude to them. Maybe that's having them receive the proclamation in Earth Month, or maybe it's some other way that you think would be meaningful to that group. Feel free to, you know, send that our way as well, but just want to recognize those awesome volunteers. Thanks.
Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to item number two, which is our 2022 Environmental Sustainability Action Plan Annual Report. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, so, so I'm going to, I'll share a couple visuals here in just a minute, but, so a core, core element of all, of our sustainability programming, of any sustainability program, right, is our kind of monitoring and measurement work. I'm just to ensure that you're tracking against your key performance indicators and allowing you to kind of course-correct as necessary. And so, so we just completed our 2022 Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory and Annual Report. And so, today, it's my goal just to review some of the key highlights from that work, but really focusing on our overall ESAP implementation progress, and then our 2022 Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory. And just to orient you, as well as the community, so the 2022 report includes kind of three core pieces. So there's first kind of a visual report on the city's website, and this is where we're highlighting kind of our programs and accomplishments for calendar year 2022. And then, we also are noting some of our key performance indicators and how those, those are tracking. At the very bottom of that, of that webpage as well, we have, we added an action-by-action status update. So it's allowing, it's giving a kind of a look at each of our near-term actions in the ESAP, and also providing a status update for council's climate emergency declaration as well. And then, there's also, again, the data dashboard in our 2022 Emissions Inventory. So there's a lot to it, we're not going to cover it all tonight. I'm just going to, again, touch on those high-level takeaways, but I did just want to make sure I flagged those for council this evening. So just, I think first, too, starting with a little background, we throw around ESAP and that a lot. I personally think of the ESAP as kind of our sustainability to-do list. It is 168 specific actions that we are to implement, that the city is working to implement, and those 168 actions are phased, right? We've got near-term, medium-term, and long-term actions. So as we went through this process, I think one of the things I wanted to flag is that we now have, there are 109 actions that were flagged for implementation between 2020 and 2025, and we now have 100 of those actions underway, which represents 91% of those near-term actions are underway. And so, too, if we look across all 168 actions, I'm throwing a lot of numbers at you, but 75% of every single action in the ESAP is in motion. And so, to say that there is, there's a lot happening on the sustainability front at the city, which is really, really exciting, and it's happening across all departments and across the community as well. So it's just, there's, there's a lot of really, really great work going on, and I cannot do it justice in any, any report or a quick presentation to council. But I do just want to pull up, just give me one second while I pull up a quick visual. quick visual. So, one of the things, every other year, we complete a greenhouse gas emissions inventory. We don't do this every year because they're generally quite time-intensive, and that data doesn't necessarily change significantly over time. And so, we, we are doing that every other year. And so, let me just pull this up. Sorry, I'm going to work through a couple slides here really quick. And so what, sorry, one second. So one of the key overarching metrics for the ESAP is our greenhouse gas emissions. So this really allows us to take a peek at kind of the collective impact of the different policies and programs that we have underway. And this is both at the local level, as well as the state level, right? So this is kind of our highest-level metric that we can monitor our progress. And then, and as a reminder, you know, through our ESAP, we are working to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in half by 2030, and then to net zero our carbon neutrality by 2050. And so, so again, we committed to do our inventory every year, and 20, we just finalized the 2022 Emissions Inventory, like, very, very recently. The data generally comes in a little bit later in the year, so it makes it a little bit tricky to, to line up with reporting. But, very, very excited that we have, have this inventory data to share with you today. And so, what I wanted to highlight too, is that if we, we look at our emissions, we have a 2011 baseline year. When we look at our emissions for 2022 in comparison to our 2011 baseline year, we're seeing a 10% reduction, or actually a little bit more than a 10% reduction compared to that baseline, which does put us on track towards that, as you can see, kind of on that, that trajectory towards 2030. And so, if we look a little bit more closely at kind of where our emissions are coming from in 2022, at the community level specifically, you can see that almost two-thirds of our emissions are coming from electricity and natural gas that's used to heat and cool our homes and buildings. And then another third is generated by burning gas and diesel in our cars and trucks. And then that final sliver is from kind of pumping and treating water, refrigerants, and emissions that are generated from the waste that we throw in the landfill. So this kind of pie, if you will, is very similar to past inventories, kind of our makeup hasn't changed as a community, again, electricity being the bulk of those emissions, and transportation being that second big source of emissions. So, let's say the big takeaway for, on the community emissions inventory side, is that buildings and energy, as well as transportation, are continuing to be our largest source of emissions, and where we will continue to focus a lot of our efforts. And it's not to say that the other areas aren't important, but again, these are where our big emission sources are coming from, so programming is certainly needed to support reductions in those spaces. We also completed a government operations greenhouse gas emissions inventory. And so here, this, this graph doesn't show it, obviously, but we did see a really significant decrease in our emissions. We saw 55% reduction in our greenhouse gas emissions compared to our 2011 baseline. And this was driven almost entirely by our transition to PSC's Green Direct Program, right, which provides us with dedicated clean electricity for government operations. So, 2022 was the first full year that we participated in that program, which is why we saw such that, such a big jump. But I will say that reductions moving forward are going to be much more, they're hard, they're going to be very challenging, right? This was the, the big, good, good win, and now it's working to decarbonize our buildings and transition our fleet and electrify our fleet, which is obviously going to be much more challenging. So, we will not be seeing a 40, or 55% reduction in future years like this, but there will be, again, those more hard-earned GHD reductions on the municipal side moving forward. So, and this, actually, I'm done with those visuals. So I think what I wanted to, let me stop sharing really quick. So I think as, as we look to kind of what's next, and how do we use this data, you know, how are we going to be modifying our programs, really the big takeaway is it's about accelerating our, our progress and expanding our work, so that we can reach more people and continue to work towards our goals. So we've got, we're still getting, again, those pieces in place and moving from kind of the planning phase to the implementation phase, which is tricky, right? It's, it's a much harder and heavier lift. But as a smaller city, I think one of the things we're doing really well is working in collaboration with, and coalition with other cities and jurisdictions to help move these efforts forward. Our Eastside Climate Partnership being one of those big efforts that's really helping on the building decarbonization side. But that is true on many, many fronts, not just on the energy side. I think the other big piece that's really front of mind for me in particular is just strategizing on how we best position ourselves to benefit from the Climate Commitment Act dollars. So that's the benefit of the state's cap and trade program, and the revenue that's generated from that, as well as ensuring that we're bringing the benefits of the Inflation Reduction Act to our, our community. So, because there's, you know, a lot of great resources that are available through the federal government, through the IRA, and the bipartisan infrastructure law, but again, we just need to make sure that we're strategically positioned to, to access those funds. So again, I barely skimmed the surface today, but again, know that there is so much great collective work that's happening at the city. I mean, Tristan and Dave's work, for instance, is just one teeny-tiny sliver of all of the amazing work that staff is doing here. We're really fortunate at the city to have a really dedicated group of staff who are, you know, dedicated to this work and meeting the city's goals. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, there was a lot of materials that I provided, and so I can go into any of those pieces that would be helpful for council. But again, hopefully provided some good context, at least on the data, or the greenhouse gas emissions side.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, and thank you so much, Ms. Leibek. Couple things on my mind. I guess the first big question is about PSC, because electricity being what it is, in the makeup of our emissions, we can be doing our part, making our changes here in the city, but just, how are you feeling lately about PSC meeting its targets on time to clean up the grid?
Yeah, I mean, every, all of their, you know, documents and the work that they're doing at the state level is, you know, they are working as hard as they can to roll out new programs, get more creative and innovative in, in their work. So, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful, and, you know, we continue to follow and do everything we can to support that. But, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
You didn't say, I'm, I'm very worried about them not meeting their targets. You did not say that. Okay, great. All right, a couple other things from here. I wanted to flag for the council, we saw in the materials that the emissions, you know, they did go up in the pandemic recovery because of folks being back on the road. We studied this at the Growth Management Planning Board, and we've looked at the data. I mean, all traffic, we all know this innately, if we're out and about in the community, but traffic has rebounded entirely. So, we may even see it for the 2023 data. I guess if we are only doing it every two years. All to say, we could actually see that transportation emission number go up again when we measure this in '24, depending on how that recovery continues to impact things.
I mean, yeah, so actually, transportation is one of the areas where we saw reductions, specifically because our vehicle miles traveled have gone down. To your point, yes, there was a huge drop in 2020 from the pandemic. I honestly don't really even consider the 2020 data in my work, right, because it's just, it's a, it's an anomaly. In talking with some of our transportation folks, they actually feel like that 2022 data is, is not too far off from where we hope, like, our new normal will be.
Okay.
Because of this transition to hybrid work. So, I think it's like a 17% reduction that we saw in our transportation emissions compared to, or 15% in our transportation emissions compared to our baseline year, because of that. And it's, it is from a VMT reduction entirely. So, I think to your point, we'll see where things pan out in '24, and that's why some people advocate for longer times between inventories, because, you know, it takes time for some of these trends to really, and the impact of these policies to be seen, so.
Well, I guess the benefit here in Redmond, and I did see my first train being tested in my neighborhood today, so it was very exciting. We do have this incredible transportation infrastructure coming onboard here in Redmond, so we'll see that reflected in future measurements too. Okay, great. And then just lastly, for the listening community, who, I know we have a lot of folks interested in this, there was a lot of emphasis in the materials about the Redmond Senior and Community Center being a, a model project, and all of the things that we've done differently to honor the community's interest and our, and our own goals in this. And I just wanted to put in a plug that solar panels are still available, and you can check out the campaign on the city website. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Kritzer?
Following up on, on some of the changes we saw between 2020 to 2022, understanding that there was this anomaly, on page four of the, the report that you had attached to this, the Eastside Cities Greenhouse Gas Emissions Analysis Report, it appears that there's also been an increase from 2020 in terms of emissions from the built environment. Can you speak to that, as well as, it seems like there's also been a rise in process and fugitive emissions, and I was just curious if you could speak to those, kind of two, why, why we're seeing those, those increases? I imagine from built environment, obviously, there's a lot of building going on, but how you think about that as well in terms of the trends for the future, and how we mitigate that?
Yeah, so for, yeah, for commercial energy, obviously, so I guess one thing I'll just note is that when we, we receive data, like, in very high-level summaries from PSC, so it's basically by sector. So I only know the total commercial energy, industrial energy, and that's all reflected on our, our data dashboard as well. But we did see a significant decline in, or decrease in energy use from the commercial sector during the pandemic, right, which we know because everyone was working from home. So that being one of the big areas that we saw rebound. So, but, very, very significantly. I don't have, I can do the percentage calculation, but I won't do that on the fly. And then your, your second question was about fugitive emissions. So one of the things I didn't touch on with this, but we actually, we worked in partnership with the other Eastside cities to do this greenhouse gas emissions inventory. So we all use the same methodology, and the intent is that we are continuing to have a more robust inventory. So the reason why you saw more process and fugitive emissions is because that wasn't something we had tracked in the past, but it's a new element of our inventory. So we are, we created a more holistic view of our emissions, and this is just an ongoing effort to be more holistic and just improve our, our processes as we, as we move forward. So, so, yeah, for instance, the upstream impacts, so that's like our transmission and distribution losses from energy that was never tracked before. I mean, it's estimate, right, but that is a new element of our inventory, so.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, because I was looking at the historical years. It didn't seem like there was much of a bar at all around that. So, it makes sense that we're actually adding that data. And that might be helpful. I don't know if it's on the website that this is a, those, those particular metrics are new as of a certain time, so it doesn't seem like we suddenly had a new set of emissions suddenly coming out, but that, it's more than that, we're tracking it. One other question I have for you is, obviously, we're tracking a lot against the ESAP. We also passed our zero-carbon strategy, and I'm just curious how you're thinking about looking at these metrics and measuring against, you know, the, especially when we look at the municipal operations metrics. You mentioned what has been achieved so far of the ESAP, and the zero-carbon strategy is kind of a subset of that, or it has additional actions. So I was just curious how you're tracking that, and also based on the path that we're on, do you think we're on the track for our goals for 2030 for municipal operations?
Yeah, so to your question on like, the, the zero-carbon strategy, so the metrics are still being tracked, right? So that's our energy use and our greenhouse gas emissions, and that's specifically the government data that I was sharing, or the city operations data, rather. The intent is that we're pulling in the specific actions into the ESAP in future updates too, so we are kind of, again, looking holistically, and we're absolutely moving that work forward. I definitely could have reported on it. There's just, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of pages here. So it's certainly something I can look at to do in the future. So, yeah, I can absolutely add that moving forward. To your, your last question was about...
It was just, you know, based on what we're seeing in the trends around those metrics, do you think we're on track for that?
Yeah, maybe if you're okay with it, I would love to punt that to, like, a year or two from now, because, I mean, we're really on the decarbonization side for buildings and fleet. We're absolutely in that planning phase, so we have two planning efforts right now, the fleet strategy and the facility condition assessment. Both of those will be instrumental in saying how quickly we can do this work and what it will cost. So, I can, once we have those, those reports, that's when we will then move to implementation and really understand what that looks like. So, I think in about six months, I can give you a better answer on that.
That's great, and thank you so much for all your work. You're doing an amazing job.
Thanks, it's a team effort.
Great, thank you. And Councilmember Forsyth?
Thank you. Really appreciate the conversation so far. Just on, back on the graph that you showed us with the yellow dot, there were actually two yellow dots?
Yes.
And I wasn't certain what the first one was.
The first one, I can share that again. The first one was our 2020 inventory. See if it comes up on the right side. Nope. There we go. Yeah, so this dot right here is our 2020 greenhouse gas emissions inventory. So this is speaking, like, to Councilmember Stewart's point about...
The blip?
It's a blip, yeah. So I...
Got it. That makes a lot more sense now. Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate the explanation on that. Just, I see the 2020 up above it now.
Yeah, sorry, I think that's a typo on my part.
A little, yeah, okay, got it. That makes sense. And then I just wanted to briefly mention, I'd recently heard talks about a potential King County climate levy. I'm sure you are aware of that, but if there is a way for you to include updates in future briefings, that would be ideal, and letting us know if there's anything that we can do as far as getting the word out, or helping shape that, that would be great.
Great. Councilmember Stewart?
Sure, just because it was mentioned. I recently had a chance to check in with Director Burt about that fleet study, because we, the council, were expecting by the end of the year, but it looks like that's going to be Q1, and certainly well ahead of putting together the, the budget for the next biennium. So, I, I got a lot more detail on the individual steps, but I think Q1 is probably just a good update for everyone. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Forsyth?
Sorry, one more thing. I know in our climate emergency declaration, we had a bit about removing our financial interests, and I don't know that we've heard anything about that lately, so if we could get that maybe early next year, sometime next year, that'd be great. Or if you have any information?
So I did, so then one of, one of the attachments, there is a note on that one. That is one of the efforts that is, has not been initiated, so, you know, there's no progress at this point to, to report on with that, but happy to circle back with more information.
Thanks.
All right. Any further questions? Looks like that is it. Thank you so much for the report and reports, and thanks very much. All right, is, is there anything else for the good of the order? Yes, Councilmember Stewart?
Mr. Carson, I just wanted to recognize you. Thanks for being an awesome committee chair. Early in my term, you were the first to reach out and help me get myself oriented around some of the procedures for this, and we look forward to celebrating you more next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is my last committee meeting that I shall preside over probably in my, my lifetime, so, anyway, it's, it's been a pleasure to serve with you all, so, but we have at least another month to go, so. Anyway, with that, we are adjourned.